7:03 and I'd like to call the meeting to order, starting with roll call.
Councilmember Els.
Here.
Councilmember Hufte is absent at the moment. Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Vice Mayor Haskell.
Here.
Mayor Wernicke.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, we have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we'll move on immediately to item number three, the town manager report from interim town manager Corey Stoker.
Thank you, Mayor Wernicke. Just a few brief updates. The town is seeking volunteers for our two town commissions, the Architectural Site Control Commission and our Planning Commission. To apply, please submit a letter of interest to Terrence Grindal, our interim planning and building director, to tgrindal@portolavalley.net by 5:00 PM on December 13th. Information is also available on our website. And last is just a quick reminder that the town hall is closed for the holidays from December 24th to January 1st, reopening January 2nd with our next regular meeting of the town council on January 8th. And last but certainly not least, to be thoughtful of her time, we have Congresswoman Anna Eshu with us to make remarks regarding item 6A, recognition of outgoing Mayor Sarah Wernicke and Councilmember Jeff Els. And afterward, we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Corey. Christine, so moving on to item number four, oral communications, and I believe we have Congresswoman Anna Eshu on the line.
Hello, this is Nicholas from her office. She should have a phone number and may be raising her hand right now.
Nicholas, we don't currently see her phone number as one of our attendees.
I will check in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do you recommend in the meantime? Should we move on to other oral communication or do you think that's related? Yeah, let's start oral communications, but if she joins, we will stop to accommodate her schedule. So first up on the list from speaker cards is Wendy Wall from Senator Becker's office.
Let's clarify when the public comment is.
Oh, she's talking for item six. I apologize if I didn't, I might list a comment cards. All right, I apologize, Wendy. I didn't realize that was for an item further along on the agenda. Okay, so these are for, this is oral communications for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the schoolhouse that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? All right, I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse. I'll move over to Zoom. There's one hand raised on the Zoom, Rita Comas. Again, this is for items not on the agenda.
Hi, thank you for taking my poll. I'm just going to comment on something that is not on the agenda and I'm sure our finance director knows about this, but in looking over the warrant list, that's going to be proposed to be approved tonight, and this is not a discussion on something, a discussion of the warrant list or asking for it to be put aside, which is going to be later. But in looking at the cost of our contracted town clerk, if you add up the numbers, it comes out to over $264,000 a year. And I just, I just really hope that we are being, you know, tightening up and being a little more fiscally responsible and actively looking for a permanent solution or to convert our very good consultant that we have as we move forward and trying to be as, you know, as mindful as we can with our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I don't see any additional hands raised on Zoom, and I'm still not seeing Congresswoman Eshu's phone number. So I'm going to suggest that we move on to the next agenda item and we will pause if we see her join the Zoom. All right, thank you. All right, so with that, we will move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that members of the council would like to poll?
Yeah, I want to pull 5A, the minutes from our last meeting. And you can, I could explain after we do the rest.
All right.
I'll move approval of items 5B through 5G.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Els.
Aye.
Councilmember Hufte.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell.
Aye.
Mayor Wernicke.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, 5A. There, in the minutes, there is a conclusion that certain conditions were imposed on the, on the Stanford Wedge project, Portola Terrace. If you really read those and parse them, they're, they don't sync up with where we left off. And so what I would propose is to send those back for review by the town attorney and the planning director and make sure that the wording reflects their understanding. I can share with them my comments, but I think it's better off if we're very accurate on those. And I just think someone might have listened to the recording, not followed every single thing, but there's, the conditions are too important for there not to be complete accuracy. So I would just bring them back next time rather than talk about it in detail right now.
I'm comfortable with that.
I am as well.
All right.
Okay, so.
So is there a motion to approve our, so we would, what would we do there? We'd just continue?
No action needed.
No action needed, okay.
The direction, thank you.
The one thing I'm also realizing though is we forgot to take public, I forgot to take public comment on, or on the consent agenda. So although it's after the fact, if there's anybody in the schoolhouse that would like to have a public comment on the consent agenda, please raise your hand or come forward. And then is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make public comment on the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any, I do see Nicholas from Representative Anna Eshu's office hand raised.
Hey Nicholas, are you still with us?
Yes, Congresswoman Eshu should be on the line and she will raise her hand by pressing star nine with that phone number.
See a call in user one? I, I believe, call in user one, is that you, Congresswoman Eshu? It appears that you are unmuted and should be able to speak. Now it appears that there's a red line through the phone there. Okay. So Nicholas, I don't know if assistance is needed, but it appears that it's, that line is still muted.
Thank you. Could you prompt her to unmute? Is there a way to do that on your end of things?
Our understanding is, if you can hear me, it's star six to unmute. Does anybody else have any suggestions? Okay. I think it's because it's on a phone line, it's different. All right. I'm thinking we will continue moving on and Nicholas, I guess if, assuming you can hear me, if, if you could raise your hand if you have any updates, but it appears that we're having an issue with getting that phone line unmuted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate, if we're not able to, to connect, I just want to say, on behalf of myself and Jeff Els, we greatly appreciate your effort being with us here tonight, Congresswoman Eshu, especially calling in from DC at this very busy time for you as you are finishing up your term. And I feel that all of us here in the schoolhouse want to say back, a thank you back to you. Obviously, we all owe you an enormous gratitude for your service over the many years for all of us in this community. So thank you to you, and I hope you, I hope you can hear that from us. All right. So I am now going to move, close, the consent agenda is now closed because we've continued that item, and so we will move over to item number six, which is the council reorganization. And Corey Stoker is going to be taking over at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Wernicke. So now considering that it's our reorganization night, we're prepared to hold three different public comment periods for the regular agenda. The first will be prior to item 6A, which is the recognition of outgoing Mayor Sarah Wernicke and Councilmember Jeff Els. So at this point, we would accept public comment on item 6A and 6B, which would be the remarks by outgoing Mayor Sarah Wernicke and Councilmember Jeff Els. So the first speaker card we have is Wendy Walls from Senator Becker's office.
Lot of rules here.
Okay, hello. Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Wendy Wall and I'm here on behalf of Senator Josh Becker's office to say a huge thank you to outgoing Mayor Sarah Wernicke. As you all know, she was elected in 2020 during unprecedented times in the midst of the pandemic, and so she had to address that challenge. And also, we began having wildfire, you know, the wildfire risk increased, so she had to face that challenge. And she spent four years working, she began, she was a vice mayor for two years and then was my mayor this past year. And she's spent countless hours working to, on the complex issue of housing in the area. And I have this resolution for her today, which I will not read the entire thing, but we just want to thank her for her, her tireless service, working for the town of Portola Valley and making sure that everything she did was within the character of the town and working with the constituents and to make sure that this continues to be a great place. Thank you so much for your four years of service.
Next, we have Ariana Zialowski from Assemblyman Mark Berman's office.
Hello, so on behalf of Assemblymember Mark Berman, I want to thank Jeff Els for all that he's done. As a result of your tireless and unwavering work and commitment to the town of Portola Valley, we have compiled this resolution for you on your behalf.
From Supervisor David Canepa's office, we have Jet Penn with us.
I want to thank all of you for having me here and thank you, council members, for serving your great city. May the county and this city collaborate and make this place a better place for everyone.
We have Alex Von Felts.
So I'm here to honor and thank Sarah and Jeff. Jeff, I think, I mean, you've been on so many years, not only the council, but everything before that. I believe we even worked together on the ASCC a long time ago.
I actually took your seat when you moved to planning.
Oh, God, oh, you're welcome, I guess, yeah, yeah.
It was even warm.
Over the, so I, that's right, when we had to overlap the bill on planning and ASCC, there's just been so many times where I've seen you have to face difficult situations. And I've just been so impressed and appreciative of your even temper, at least that's what we see, I don't know if it's always that way, and your, and your open-mindedness, always trying to take in all the different points of view. Yeah, just think about the issues. I mean, I was only witness to some of them, which actually in comparison to the last few years seems somewhat minor, but just things like, you know, artificial turf, that was a very heated debate at the time. And just the thoughtfulness that you put into a decision like that was really impressive. And then on top of that, the leadership you've shown in green energy and actually making our town, reducing our carbon footprint has been huge, and I think that's a really big legacy. Most of all, what I'd like to recognize in you is your kindness. That's not always a trait that we see in elected officials, so I really appreciate that. So thank you very much for all your service. And Sarah, well, it hasn't been as many years, but some might say it feels like more, I'm not sure. As you know, was pointed out, you came in during COVID, I think I remember we haven't, people had to sign papers on my front doorstep with our clean and dirty pens and, which seems kind of crazy now, but, and then the, you know, the last years with the housing element, the staff changes, and I'm sure more than I'm not even aware that you had to, to navigate over the last few years. So just amazing amount of work. I appreciate how much you listened and involved so many different voices. Like I, I just witnessed you trying to make sure you're listening to everybody, just people, not just those that, you know, supported you, but everybody, and also involve new voices in the process, which is really important. And what I admire most about you, I know this is going to sound funny, but how realistic and practical you are. You know, I mean, it's hard to find compromise, and that's, I think, the secret to, to our government. So I appreciate how you really try to find compromise in many difficult situations. So also, thank you for your service and specifically for sticking with it to the end. Thank you both.
Any other hands in the schoolhouse, please, in front?
Kathleen Mazzid from Supervisor Ray Newland's office. Ray really thought he could be here, that's why we didn't fill out his speaker card, but he is at the, he often thinks he can be at everything at once, but he, this is the retirement party for Supervisors Pine and Slocum, and he's giving the big speech. So we said to him, you really can't do everything tonight, so here I am. So, but we did manage to have a resolution for Mayor Wernicke and for Councilmember Els. So here I am presenting them, and he said, be sure you get there on time. So I scrambled, got here on time. So I know you don't know me, but I live in Lahanda, just over the hills, so I've heard a lot about Portola Valley and all the fine work. And Ray said, scramble, make it there, make it on time, because this is important. These people have done fine work. So I wanted to present this resolution, which is signed by all of the supervisors on the San Mateo County Board of.
Hello, my name's Anne Kopsl, and I want to thank Jeff and Sarah very, very much. There are many, many topics, but the one I know about and have worked with you is housing. So I want to really thank you for your work and leadership on that. Of course, it's a very complicated topic. It's very contentious. It's important to the town, and I feel like we would not be where we are today without your all's leadership on the Housing Element Committee, just so many meetings, and Sarah had such great leadership to come up with a process where we looked really thoroughly at all the sites in town, vetted all of them, just really had many discussions, open discussions, came to consensus with all, I mean, I think it was 15 people, which was impressive, and you all really pushed people to make decisions. I mean, it's hard, there's not an easy answer, right? And at the end of 2022, I was so proud, my small town, actually coming to a housing element and picking sites that were, were good sites, you know, it was a real, we, both the spirit of the law and the letter of the law. So thank you all very much, you're going to be very missed.
Any other hands in the schoolhouse? Please. I just want to say to Councilmember Els and to Mayor Wernicke, the time and energy both of you have brought to this board and body, embody what democracy is about. You have represented your constituents with integrity, thoughtfulness, and patience, and it is appreciated. Thank you. Any other hands in the schoolhouse? Okay, any hands on Zoom? Not seeing any hands on Zoom, I want to hand it over to our Vice Mayor, Yopasco.
Great. Right, well, I want to sincerely thank Jeff and Sarah for their years of dedication to helping Portola Valley in changing times. Having served on the council for two years now, I can appreciate more fully how much work the departing council members have done for our community. Their sense of the community and its history have been clear in their approach to their council member roles. I know many others have offered detailed comments. I'm going to briefly note a couple that impressed me in particular. First, for Jeff, I remember his serving as our mayor during the unprecedented COVID challenges. I remember his emails to our community, serving as a lifeline as we self-isolated, informing us regularly and articulately on our town's efforts to support residents and local businesses. Second, Jeff's focus on sustainability in our community has made us all aware of our choices and their implications. I've learned a lot from Jeff and in this respect, and truly thank him for that. We have seen Sarah as our mayor this year navigate many challenges, trying to identify new paths forward through both anticipated and unexpected issues. Her striving for balance between handling some of the hardest issues while also recognizing what makes our town special is remarkable. For example, while handling various housing issues, she proposed a new founders award to recognize lifetime contributions to the town. She also led efforts for some of our numerous committees in town to have more choice on how and when they meet by converting them to town manager committees and guiding that process in the right way. Thank you for your service, your dedication, Sarah and Jeff. We hope you enjoy your Wednesday evenings going forward for well-deserved and enjoyable time with your friends and family. Really appreciate it, it's been wonderful to be serving with you. Thank you.
Councilmember Hufte?
Sincerely, I thank you for the gift of time and the energy and the outreach that you've done and the lessons in cooperating. I've appreciated all the time that you've spent with me, Sarah. And Jeff, I agree with the comment about kindness, you've been kind and, and understanding and always have a good word when it needs to be said. So thank you very much for your service and for your support in getting these last two years going.
Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I think my fellow councilmembers have said it well, so I'm not going to say too much more, but Sarah and Jeff have seen me haul this big backpack around on trips and stuff, but tonight, there's actually something in it for them.
Oh. I thought he was training for something. Uh-oh. I like a gift bag, that's an Uber gift bag.
Because I didn't want to crush you, at least I hadn't added it to the box.
Yeah, what's the rule?
Well, you don't have to open it now, it looks like Jeff's deep into it. No, no, so I, I will, you're very welcome. I will note that both their cards are addressed to the honorable Sarah and the honorable Jeff. This might be your last day to be called the honorable, but I have to say that both of you have been fabulous, you've been fabulous colleagues, it's been a real pleasure to work with both of you, and you've been both an inspiration, so thank you very much. And while they're, while they're, while they're hugging up here, I would, I, I wanted to add that these are homemade gifts, so I don't think I violated any gift-giving act here. Anyway, thank you again, guys.
Thank you. So I have some brief comments just from myself and staff, if I can share that. So it's with both sadness and appreciation that we recognize Jeff and Sarah on behalf of our team. The Portola Valley staff thoroughly enjoyed working with you both. There was always an endless amount of support, appreciation, and thoughtfulness. Staff was so grateful for the innovation during COVID times and with our post-COVID transitions. You're an amazing team and the flow of your work together is unmatched, and the balance you provide each other works so well. Jeff, you're a sustainability pioneer. Your work with PCE will forever be remembered, and your advice on where to spend time and how to leverage resources has helped each and every one of us. In my two years with you, you were a steady hand in rough times, a shoulder whenever needed, and you care so deeply for the staff and for this town. You always have the best interest at heart. One thing I always hear from staff is, ugh, Jeff is just so great. And it's absolutely true. Your leadership as mayor in 2023 paved the way for some great success in 2024. Sarah, you're our strategist. You have an absolute talent for project management and collaboration. You're an advocate for the community and for staff, no matter how challenging it can be. You were the first council member I met before I started my work here, and I remember walking away from our initial meeting completely inspired and motivated by your passion and dedication to this community. You encourage us to think outside the box and to be creative. You led us as mayor this year through many trials and tribulations, but found a way to be encouraging, supportive, and successful throughout the process. In an almanac article, Sarah stated, sometimes you need to take a step back before you can move forward. While there have been many small steps back as we rebuild and refocus, moving in these positive steps forward would not be possible without the support from Jeff and Sarah over the past few years. We are so sad to see you both go, but so grateful for the time you spent on town council. Thank you, Sarah and Jeff, for your service. So I now want to open the floor to remarks by Councilmember Els and Mayor Wernicke, which would be item 6B.
Oh, okay. I'm going to start with a joke. So this, this guy walks into a pub in New York City. He orders three Guinnesses, sits down, starts sipping. He orders three Guinnesses, sits down, starts sipping at a table, starts sipping them one at a time, finishes them, goes back to the bar, he orders three more. The bartender says, you know, sir, they'll keep better if you drink them one at a time, and I can bring them to you if that's a problem. The old man says, well, you see, I've got two brothers in Dublin and another in Australia, and this is our way of drinking together. And the bartender says, oh, that's lovely. Say no more. And it becomes a regular. It becomes a regular thing. He comes to the bar, he orders his three Guinnesses at a time. All the locals know him. They kind of keep a distance, but they're all familiar with him. This goes on for a while. Maybe after a year, he walks in one day and he orders two Guinnesses. And, you know, the significance of this is not lost on the regulars. And so as he's finishing his two Guinnesses, the bartender walks over with two more and says, you know, sir, I don't mean to intrude, but I want you to know we're all sorry for your loss. And he looks confused for a minute, and then his eyes light up. He says, no, 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 my brothers are fine. I've just had to quit drinking. That was the best joke I could think of to make the point that just because you leave elected office doesn't mean you quit politics. So I will not be here in January, but I won't be far. I will do my best not to backseat drive, but if you have questions, you know where to find me. I might know where the bones are buried, although I know nothing about how they got there. Okay, this is the part where I thank a lot of people. Government's a team sport. I can't do anything without two other votes and a staff report. So first of all, I want to thank my fellow councilmembers, past and present and future. I served for two years with Ted Driscoll, the beginning of my term. I served for nine years with Craig Hughes and Ann Wangert. I served for 11 years with Mary Ann Durwin and John Richards. Served for four years with Mayor Wernicke. And of course, the past two years, I've served with Vice Mayor Hasko and councilmembers Taylor and Huffty. And I maintain that the work we did and the conversations we had on the various issues were as high-level and good as any I've seen anywhere. So I thank all of you, past and present, for working with me and for making this job fun to do most of the time. I should thank some other supervisors, Pine and Slocum. Actually, the full board have been very good collaborators over the years. I should thank all of them, particularly Dave Pine and Warren Slocum, who are both leaving after, I believe, 12 years each of service. Our board member, Ray Miller, has been a great help to us over the last few years. I really appreciate the work that the office has done. I also want to thank Senator Becker and Assemblymember Berman for the work that they've done to support us, as well as our previous assembly members, Senator Jerry Hill, and of course Representative Eshu. Hope she, sorry, she couldn't speak, but I really appreciate the work that she's done. And then staff. I have, if you include interim managers, I've worked with seven different town managers. When I first joined, Barbara Powell was our interim manager. We hired Nick Bagaros in March of 2012. After three years, he left, and Debbie Pedro was our interim manager. We then hired Jeremy Dennis in January of 2016. When he left in 2023, Howard Young was our interim manager. We, after that, we hired Sharif Edman in 2023. And when he left, since he left, Corey Stoker has been our, Stogie Pedalino has been our interim town manager. I've made a point to do as much as possible through the managers and not work with staff, and so I've gotten to know those managers all pretty well in the times that I've gotten to work with them. And it's been, you know, again, I can't do anything in this job. I'm entirely dependent on staff, particularly the managers. So thank you all, past and present, for your support. Planning is our bread and butter, and I've been through a whole bunch of town planners. When I first joined the council, Leslie Lambert was our planning manager, and Tom Vlasic was our town planner. That lasted for a few years. Karen Christensen took over for Tom when he first left, and then Debbie Pedro came in. Later, Laura Russell was our planner through the Housing Element and several other big projects. And currently, we have two retired renewatants, Terrence and John Biggs and Terrence Grindel. Sorry. Again, we, planning, and I'm embarrassed to admit this, but after 13 years, I still really don't understand planning. But fortunately, all of our planners have been good enough at explaining things to me that I can make what I feel are important, informed decisions, understanding enough to make the decisions. So they've been incredibly valuable. Our other long-term staff, a few of them, Howard Young was here for a long time. Cindy Rotis has been here a long time, and then Scott Weber, in particular, I will point out. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure to work with, really, with all of you. I do want to go back and just acknowledge Mayor Wernicke. About four years ago, or a little longer now, I said something like, yeah, join the council, it'll be fun. I'm sorry. First and foremost, I'm not sure I knew what I was getting you into. But you have, you took up that, you stepped up, you took that challenge, and I really appreciate the four years that we worked together. And then the same with Judith, Craig, and Mary, who two years later stepped up for the same challenge, knowing, I think, full well what you could expect. I hope it has not been too difficult, but I've appreciated working with you. And for Rebecca and Helen, again, stepping up and taking on this job. I wish you the best of luck. I will not backseat drive. You do know where to find me. If you have questions, again, thank you all. Finally, I guess I need to thank my family. I know at least one of my siblings, and I believe my dad are watching on Zoom. Thank you. You instilled just a sense of service in me. I appreciate it. I know that, I'll tell one story. When I was mayor in 2015, my mom passed away about two months into my term as mayor, and I had to go home to her funeral. This was in Sioux City, Iowa. And half of the people there, people I hadn't seen in, you know, 20 years or more in some cases, were, oh, I hear you're the mayor now. And I'd been mayor two months, so how would they know this? And I realized that my mom had told everybody that I was the mayor, and she put it into her Christmas letter and all these things. And I just sort of, so I guess it's safe to say I think she was proud of me. I hope my family is also proud of me. And finally, you know, my own family here. My wife, and my wife is here. I'm not going to introduce her because she doesn't like attention, but she, you know, I don't know how many times that I left the house, and she left her to clean up after a meal and put the kids to bed because I was off to a meeting, these meetings and other meetings. I couldn't have done it without you. Thank you. One of my children is here. The other one is at school, but somewhere in the back. I'm not going to point him out either. My children don't remember a time when I wasn't doing this job. So they've put up with me being gone quite a bit. I will say, I think they're proud of the work I've done, but I think they're also relieved I'm not doing it anymore. Don't want to speak for them, but again, I couldn't have done it without all of you. So thank you. And just finally, you know, I wish I were leaving, you know, I wish I weren't leaving some of the uncertainties that we're leaving with. I will say, I think the challenges we're going through right now, I think, were inevitable. You know, I think we're going through this process of kind of modernization and professionalization of what we do in town. It's a work in progress, but I will say to all of you, I feel very good about the future. I think there is a path forward. I will no longer be making the hard decisions. It will be up to others. But I, you know, the past year, we've made a lot of progress. I think we had some things, I mean, sometimes it unfortunately takes a crisis to make some of the hard changes that we've been making, but I think we've stepped up and we're making them. And there is more to do, and I appreciate you continuing to do it. But I am hopeful for the future of Portola Valley. I am grateful for all of the support I got from so many people in doing this job. And I thank you. And now I'm done.
Thank you, Jeff. So I just want to also say thank you so much for the privilege of serving on town council. It really has been an honor. But in my final moments here, what I really want to do is, like you, Jeff, express some gratitude, starting primarily with you. First and foremost, thank you for your remarkable service and dedication to our community. Jeff served on the ASCC for three years before joining the town council, where he dedicated 13 years, including two terms as mayor. Having served on council for less than a third of that time, I cannot emphasize enough the immense contribution Jeff has made. His volunteer time alone is the equivalent to several years of full-time work. Literally, I added it up. His tenure encompassed navigating the profound challenges of the pandemic, as has been said, as well as these past few years of unprecedented complexity and instability. Throughout it all, Jeff has exemplified principled and steadfast leadership, always prioritizing what is best for our community above all else. Thank you. Thank you also to our staff, past and present, to Laurel Russell and Kara Silver for educating our community about state housing law and regulations and guiding us through the most robust, thorough, and transparent housing element process on the peninsula. To Corey Stoker, who has been nothing short of a rock in our town hall over the last two years, including through several leadership transitions and more often than not juggling multiple roles, always with poise and professionalism. To Tony McFarlane, for your patient and methodical approach to rebuilding our town's financial foundation. Since day one, your work has been instrumental in steering us toward a sustainable future. And to the rest of the team, whether interim planning leaders stepping in to support us, new members bringing fresh energy to our permanent staff, or seasoned veterans who have dedicated over 20 years to our community, thank you for your commitment and your contributions. And finally, of course, thank you to my colleagues, Judith, Craig, and Mary. I have appreciated your partnership and collaboration over the last two years. Looking ahead, I'd like to extend my congratulations to Rebecca Flynn and Helen Walter and express my gratitude for their willingness to serve our community. We face significant challenges, and I am confident they will help us, help guide us through the work ahead. And because, as Alex said, I am a practical, direct person, I also want to share some comments reflecting upon the last couple years. Our town has seen divisive elections in these recent cycles. And just as the 2022 election sent a clear message advocating for change, the results of the 2024 election delivered a powerful statement as well. I believe this outcome reflects a majority rejection of the turmoil that we've experienced as a community over recent years, a period that's been shaped, unfortunately, in many ways by actions by some vocal minority, by a vocal minority that has, at times, has been disrupted to governance, created a divisive atmosphere, and even employed legal measures to advance their agenda. These distractions have had an impact of wasting our valuable time and our limited resources. I strongly believe that the 2024 election signals the community's desire to move past these complicated times and distractions and refocus on good work, collaborating together with civility, and strengthening the foundations for our municipal governance. I agree, we are at a pivotal moment, but I'm very optimistic about the road ahead and trusting my fellow councilmembers here, and Mary, Craig, and Judith, as well as the new councilmembers that will be voted, or that will be seated here tonight. Thank you so much. And so thank you to everybody. This has been a really lovely, you know, thank you for the flowers and the words of recognition on behalf of Jeff and I. I know we really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. I forgot one group of people, our attorneys. The attorneys are very literally the adult supervision in the room, and I had them on my list, and I forgot to mention them. Sandy Sloan, Lee Prince, Kara Silver, and now Catherine Engberg. Your work is, we couldn't function without it. So thank you, all of you, for that support. So now I'm done.
Well, and I forgot to thank my family. My husband and my three kids are here tonight in the back, so thank you for putting up with me, all of you, so. So with that, we're moving on.
So with that, we would be typically moving on to the next public comment period before item 6C, which would be the administration of the oath of office to newly elected councilmembers Rebecca Flynn and Helen Walter. So we're open to any public comments related to item 6C. Any hands in the schoolhouse? Please.
I don't have prepared remarks. I'm Felicity Behringer. I live on Alpine Road. I don't have prepared remarks. I just want to say I am so glad to hear the tone of the farewells this evening. And I have known Rebecca for eight years. Many of you have known her longer. I'm afraid I don't know Helen. But I think, given all the difficulties we have faced and that we're still in the midst of, I can't think of anybody better than Rebecca to figure out how to get out of it and to do it in a way that appreciates every point of view. The other thing I'd like to say briefly is I'm not in town as much as I would like. I have not participated as much in town government, although I've met with everyone on the council, and it's fair to say that Mary Huffty and I have known each other for 50 years or since freshman year in college. But I do believe that in a divided country, in a divided time, and a divided town, what you all have done to figure out how to work through the divisions and to continue, and I'm sure that's going to continue, is an example of how small government is the essence of democracy and how the rest of the country can learn from what you guys have done and what Rebecca and Helen will do. Thanks very much.
Any other hands in the schoolhouse? Seeing no hands on Zoom, Christine, if we could administer the oath of office for Rebecca Flynn and Helen Walter.
We should leave, right? I mean, the guys.
Rebecca and Helen, if you could please step forward. It's my honor to administer your oath of office this evening. If you could please raise your right hand. Rebecca Flynn and Helen Walter, for the office of town council member. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that you will well and faithfully take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will faithfully, will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter. Thank you. If you could sign your oaths.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. And I have your official
No getting out of it.
Election certificate from Mark Church, the chief elections officer, County of San Mateo. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Well, I may please here.
Oh, my gosh. Oh my gosh. Yeah, green line. Modern, green line. You're supposed to be over here. Just find your name site, sit behind it, there's no round. No, your name is there, it's already there.
Okay, bear with me as we move on to the appointment of the mayor and vice mayor. We'll be opening public comment in just a moment. So at this time, the office of the mayor and vice mayor are vacant. Per California Government Code Section 36801, the mayor and vice mayor of general law cities are selected by a majority vote of the town council to serve a one-year term ending at the council reorganization meeting next year. I will be opening public comment period for the appointment of mayor and vice mayor, and then I will accept nominations for the office of the mayor. And when that position is filled, the new mayor will accept nominations for the vice mayor. I'll briefly review the process that we will be following. Following public comment, I will ask if there is any council discussion or if any council member wishes to make a motion nominating a candidate for mayor. Each nomination motion requires a second. In accordance with Rosenberg Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, there can be up to three nomination motions pending. Once all motions have been made, I will ask if there is any further council discussion, and then the council will vote. The first vote will be on the last nomination motion made. If that motion is approved, there will be no further votes. If it is not approved, the council will vote on the immediately preceding nomination motion. If that motion fails, the council will vote on the first nomination motion. The votes will be conducted by roll call by the town clerk. If the council wishes to change these voting procedures, it may do so through a motion to object the decision of the chair made before nominations begin. Before we proceed with public comment, are there any questions from the town council?
No questions.
Hearing none, I will open, I would like to open public comment on item 6D, selection of the mayor and vice mayor for 2025. Any hands in the schoolhouse? Seeing no hands in the schoolhouse, going to Zoom. No hands raised on Zoom. This concludes public comment.
There is one now.
All right, Rita Combs?
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. And I'm glad that, you know, we will have just a better, possibly cleaner procedure than we did last year. So I'm happy we're at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands in the schoolhouse and no other hands on Zoom, closing public comment. Are there any nominations for office of the mayor?
I would nominate Judith Haskell.
A second.
Is there any additional nominations for the office of the mayor? Hearing no additional motions, the nominations for the office of the mayor are now closed. We can proceed with a roll call vote. At this time, when called, please signify your vote by saying aye, nay, or abstain. Councilmember Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Huster.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Haskell. You may now chair the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Corey, for that very clear process. Now I am open for taking nominations for the vice mayor. And there's no separate comment on this, right? Okay, so we just go straight to any nominations that the council has for vice mayor? And I, I'm going to go ahead and nominate Craig as vice mayor, and I will see if there's any other nominations.
I can second that.
All right, are there other nominations? Hearing none, can we go to a roll call?
Councilmember Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Mayor Haskell.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is the new mayor's comment, so bear with me. I have some thoughts written down, and I'll just go for it. I'm honored to serve as the mayor of Portola Valley for the next year and look forward to partnering with the vice mayor, other council members, commission and committee members, town staff, and the members of our community to meet the challenges we face. I've lived in Portola Valley for 18 years and volunteered for the town for nearly 15 years. I've been continually impressed by the level of community engagement, spirit, energy, talent, and enthusiasm in the town for what the general plan sets out. These strengths will be critical to our ability to define a positive path forward for Portola Valley. First off, I want to welcome the new members Rebecca and Helen. Thank you for stepping forward and volunteering your time and energy to the town during these trying times. As the last year has shown us, we must be laser focused on improving the financial health of our town. I recognize the vital contributions of our finance committee, finance director, staff consultants, and community members over the last year to enable us to understand the urgency of our current situation, to start to identify potential solutions to improve and solidify our financial situation and commit to improved transparency relating to our town finances. We have done a lot in the last year, but we have much more work to do going forward. I ask for all of you to commit individually to share your comments, concerns, and potential solutions so that we can identify together the best way we can set up our town for success. We also must continue our commitment to building a positive and productive environment for staff so they are recognized for their contributions and encouraged to develop their careers while working in our vibrant town. Over the next year, we will all have limitations in our resources, given our recently adopted balanced budget. We must all realize these limitations are necessary to gain control of our financial health in the short term. And I ask that we demonstrate patience and understanding should those limitations affect us individually. Be assured they are in the best interest of our town in the long run. It's important that we understand we are asking a lot of staff in this situation, and they will be giving us their very best in trying circumstances. As we are all aware, the housing element process has been very challenging for our small town due to the hard work and dedication by everyone involved. Though, we are fortunate to be in the process of finalizing major aspects of the housing element process and look forward to moving on to the next phase for new housing opportunities in town, including implementing our post-adoption plan and supporting the efforts of our ad hoc site evaluation committee. As a wildland urban interface community located on the San Andreas Fault and in proximity to many other faults, we must join together to enhance further the safety of our town, including our ability to evacuate the town in an emergency and to help our neighbors when natural events threaten us. Our town committees are vital to the sufferer, as are our relationships with the Woodside Fire Protection District, the Sheriff's Department, and other organizations. We will continue to build and strengthen these relationships, which are critical to protecting us in emergencies. Some of you know that I am an enthusiastic equestrian. Some of the lessons I have learned the hard way in that pursuit apply generally to life. One of the most critical is that you must focus hard on where you want to go, rather than on what you want to avoid. I will be looking forward, while I serve as mayor, toward a Portola Valley that is financially sound, a safe environment, welcoming to new residents, working closely with an engaged staff, and fostered by community engagement. We have a special community with abundant energy, talent, experience, and spirit. I encourage all residents to engage this year in any and every way you're comfortable. Write to us, weigh in during oral comments, email us your ideas. We are here to serve the town, and we need your best thoughts as we address together the challenges of 2025. That being said, we do have a reception outside, and I'm gonna, my first act is to skip over subcommittee reports and suggest that we adjourn to go honor the people who have served us for so long and to welcome our new members. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you all, happy holidays. 8:05.